Good evening and welcome to the Monday, September 8th, 2025 City Council Meeting for the City of Lamar. I'm Mayor Kurt Krespin. We had a very busy weekend with the 9/11 Tri-State Tribute this past weekend. It was a very successful event. The parade went off without a hitch, and I just wanted to give a shout out to Doug and the whole group that put that event on. They have done such an amazing job building this event up and making sure that us as a community and everyone within the tri-state region remembers that fateful day of 9/11 and also allows us to pay tribute to those first responders and the soldiers that were also affected by that. So I want to give them a great kudos and thank you for that. It was a great event for the community as well as the region. In addition, I also wanted to, I had a situation come up this past weekend where I was called in on a Sunday morning to the Yield Rummage Shop. This is an organization that gathers clothing and they do this more. They give away items, they give away clothes, they give away funding. They really are a community service organization and they've done a lot of great work in the community. However, we've had people that have constantly been just dropping things off in the middle of the night and laying it in the back of their building. We've had issues with people going through it and rummaging it. So when I arrived Sunday morning, the alleyway was just a total disaster with trash just thrown everywhere. And, you know, John Munez and Annabelle Munez contacted me and told me about the situation. They've been frustrated because they're not able to catch the individuals. Fortunately, Ezekiel Hernandez, our officer, did a wonderful job reaching out and attending to that call. And John and Annabelle wanted us to give him a shout out and thank him for all the great work that he did on this. He was able to find the individual that left the, or left that, those items there that caused the problem and was able to take some steps. I guess the reason why I'm bringing it up is, for one, I wanted to thank our officer for going above and beyond the call of duty to help out on this situation with an important organization like that for our community. And number two, just to remind everybody that, you know, those organizations that are accepting donations, they have specific hours. And in no way, in no shape is it good to just drop something off in an alleyway because it's bound to get destroyed or to get dragged out in the community and it just makes our community look worse. So thanks again to Ezekiel Hernandez for his work on that. And thanks to John and Annabelle for all their work that they do for our community. With that said, we do have a busy evening tonight for our city council meeting. We're going to start off with the invocation. We have Jim Slaney here. Jim?
Heavenly Father, today we're thankful that we can come here together and gather. We thank you for the beautiful day that you've given us. We thank you for our city council that volunteers their time to work and better the city, to take care of the business of the city and to keep it running. And we thank you just for them and the service that they provide. We pray, Lord, that you would give them wisdom as they do the business, those business that needs to be done and as they select or work on selecting a new administrator for the town. We just pray, Lord, that you would bless each one of them. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Councilman Bates, would you lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the time is now 7:03 PM. I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Joe Gonzalez.
Here.
Shay Lamotta.
Here.
Jerry Jenkins.
Here.
Kurt Krespin.
Here.
David Zavala.
Here.
Manuel Temez.
Here.
Brent Bates.
Here.
Kristen Schwartz.
Here.
Okay, we've all had an opportunity to review the agenda. I do have two items that I would like to do. One item is to move miscellaneous to number eight. And to add in as number seven, a discussion for a letter that was delivered to the council today by the Lamar Enlightened Power. Wanted to have a discussion in a possible direction with that. So I would need to move that to seven. And then since we currently have all of the information, and we'll talk about it a little bit more in a minute, but since we have all the information and everything prepared for our city administrator candidates, I would like to move that we remove the executive session or suggest that we remove the executive session altogether from our meeting. So can we get a motion to add number seven and get rid of number nine? So moved. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
Okay. With that said, it moves us to the consent agenda. We've all had an opportunity to review the consent agenda, which includes minutes and the bill payments and minutes for the boards and commissions. Were there any items that needed to be separated from the consent agenda? I didn't see any.
I didn't see any either.
So do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
So, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
Next is the public comment portion of this meeting. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject that does not appear on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each, and that's at the discretion of the council. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak to the council? Looks like we do. If you could just come up and state your name and address for the records.
Twyleb Adderton, 1903 South 10th Street. My concern is with Lamar water. Are we ever going to be able to drink it?
Okay.
I mean, I was told, which I didn't realize, we weren't supposed to be drinking it. So now I'm paying for a large water bill for my yard, and now I'm having to buy water to drink?
Who had told you that you weren't able to drink it?
My son. He said they have all these things in the paper, and it says, do not drink the Lamar, or, you know, the metals and whatever, don't drink it.
I'm not sure.
So I can drink it?
Yes. I drink it daily, right from the tap.
Okay, I'll quit buying it.
I mean, I do. I drink it daily from the tap. We have to do a testing with the states. CDPHG has us do testing. Is it annually or?
Yeah, and there's a thing on the bottom of your utility bill that talks about the consumer confidence report. You can pick up a copy in our office.
But see, I don't understand it.
Okay.
Our water is, is very safe to drink.
Okay.
Now, there are some other area communities that have other contaminants in it, and they have notified you. The state has notified the area that you should not drink that water. But as far as the Lamar water, we have passed every certification. We've had clear results for the last, as far as I can remember back, sixteen plus years.
Okay. My next concern is, when you guys put the well station out by the fairgrounds, I don't know how many years ago, or water station or whatever it was, they told me that it was going to come hook into 10th Street.
Okay.
Is that ever going to happen?
I would have to look into that, to be honest with you. I don't personally know that. I know there's one over there by Ninth or Tenth. Are you talking about by the?
Fairgrounds, right out.
Fairgrounds, Seaterway?
I live on, you know, on the corner of Tenth and Savage, and it's right out my patio door.
Yeah. And I don't know if it's connected or how it's connected. I would have to look into that.
I live on a dead end.
Okay.
And every now and then, I can feel sand in my water. I complained about it, oh gosh, I don't know how many years ago, because there was sand in my dish drain.
Yeah.
So I left it in there, called a city guy over, and he goes, oh, your kids are putting it in. Well, if my kids were putting it in, they were out of the house ten, fifteen years ago. So it wasn't my kids. It's coming from the water.
Okay, we can have that inspected. I don't, I honestly couldn't speak on that to you.
Also, at the same, well, a different time, when I was married, I had an ice maker, and I had a piece of paper about that size come through it. And it eventually shut my ice maker down.
Yeah.
Because the second time, the piece was a little bit bigger. So I said something to the city and they go, there's no way paper could come through it. They showed me the net, and I'm thinking little holes. It's kind of like the size of little squares that is out of the meters. And I thought.
And it could be different. I know many people have home, whole house water filters, you know, that come into their house, but I don't know the exact situation in that area. I will ask and find out if it was connected or if there's a plan to connect it, but I don't know.
I can't afford a soft, a soft water thing in my house.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the ones you can buy from BMS for like $40 that drain, that filter your whole house.
And you put salt in it?
No. This one is just a filter, paper filter that clears out any debris or anything that might come into your water lines. So I can have somebody mention it to you or at least bring that up to you.
I'll go down to BMS because I, I'm there quite often.
Whole house filters. So is what that would be called. But they have $40, something around there, if that is a concern. And I'll tell you, I know, what I do know about water is that no matter what the level is in our tanks and at our well stations or what the quality is, even if we had H2O or the, you know, what do they call those?
Reverse?
Reverse osmosis system. The issue isn't the water coming out of the system that we have. The issue is there are so many pipes that are so aged within our city, whether it's, I mean, I think the last time I remember right, it was somewhere around seven miles of water lines throughout our whole city. And we have been slowly replacing those, and we have a schedule that we're replacing them. As actually, right now, there are some lead lines that we're actually replacing as well.
On 10th Street?
No, these are in a different area. But my point is, is that we could have the best water quality that's available for anybody, but the lines are where we can have issues at. So if there's an issue in the line getting to your house, whether it's a crack, a leak, rusting, rusting metal, whatever it may be.
I've had rusting.
We'll need to look at those and see what.
I've had several leaks out front, and when I call at seven o'clock in the morn, this is when I was going to Springfield at seven o'clock in the morning. Well, ma'am, how do you know there's a water leak?
Yeah.
It's coming out of the street.
Okay.
Well, shut your water off.
Yeah. So when they fix them, they, they usually replace those lines out when they replace them.
They just fixed this one. They didn't replace it.
Okay. Time and money, that's what it takes. Unfortunately, it was seven miles of lines. So we are working on that, getting replaced as we can. But.
Okay.
So fair question. Thank you for asking. Was there anything else?
No, but if you want me to think of something, I can.
It's your three minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else would like to speak to the council on an item that's not on the agenda? Seeing none. We'll move on to the next item, which is reports and correspondence. First off, we have the city treasurer's report. Kristen?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're working on getting some quarterly reports done. We're under an EPA audit on our Brownfield grant that we're finishing up this week. And we got some kickoff meetings for the cleanup grant. So we're moving, moving forward on those. Identified a grant for animal shelter. So we're going to be bringing that to council for permission to apply for that one. Tess had a meeting with the Animal Assistance Foundation, and they're really excited about our project. So of rebuilding that animal shelter out at the new location. So they're excited. It's a capital grant. So we're working on some of that stuff. That was all the grant updates I have right now, unless somebody has a question for me on grants. Tyler's moving forward. We're in our second week of configuration of payroll. We've had some bumps in the requisitions and PO side of things, but Thomas has stayed right on it. The help desk has been good with Tyler. So it's just a, I'm sure it'll smooth out eventually. So, but we've made a lot of progress, able to take payments into Tyler, miscellaneous payments. And so we're working through the bugs on that. So it is going forward, all of it. So we're working diligently, trying to move that forward. So that was all I had for this evening, unless you have questions for me.
I don't have any.
Thank you.
Do you have any?
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is the city clerk's report.
So I, I have no sales and use tax report this, this month. I'm guessing maybe November, I can get you some figures for our sales and use tax. I can tell you from the revenue that I do know has come in, we, we are sitting fine. I don't know if we went up any, but we didn't go down. So rest assured that, that our sales tax revenue is still coming in very well. Election season is upon us. So we get out, campaign if needed. And our election is November 4th. That's all I have.
And we want to encourage everybody that's possible to vote. I had somebody ask me why our voting amounts were so low, our voting counts were so low, but that's just part of our community. You know, we need to have more people engaged and more people voting and turning in their voting ballots. So hopefully we can have a better turnout this year. Thank you very much. Any questions for the city clerk? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to the city administrators' report. Manuel, would you like to start?
Sure. The 9/11 Tribute Memorial unveiling of the bronze sculpture, I believe this is their second or third sculpture that they have, is September 13th, 10:00 AM at the curve at the Big Timbers Museum. The Seventh Annual 5K Run Walk with the Anthony Latour Memorial Fund is Saturday, September 20th at 7:00 AM, starts at Whittle Creek Park by the swimming pool parking lot. And then Lamar Area Hospice, the Backyard Bash fundraiser is Saturday, September 13th at 6:00 PM at the Lamar Eagles. Tickets are $60 each. Please call 940-7424 to RSVP if you have any questions. Again, 719-940-7424 to RSVP for the Lamar Area Hospice Backyard Bash fundraiser.
Okay. We also have the Lamar Elk Soccer Shoot that'll be happening this Sunday, September the 14th. Registration starts at 1:00 PM. Kicking starts at 1:30 PM. It's a free event, open to all ages between zero to 15 as of January the 1st of 2025. So it'll be, this is kind of a first time that Lamar Elks have done this soccer shoot. So we're hoping we get some good involvement on that. The Lamar Cub Scouts Pack 223 is starting their popcorn selling fundraiser. So watch out for information on their end. Watch out for the booths around town as they try to read, or you can reach out to a scouting family for more details. They, we will have four finalist candidates for the city administrator search. We have narrowed it down to these four. They will be here for interviews on the 22nd and 23rd of September. The council and staff will be doing interviews on the 22nd and the 23rd between 7:00 AM to noon on both of those days. However, they will be, we will be hosting a meet and greet in the evening of the 23rd at 6:00 PM at the Tavern 1301. So for anybody out there that would like to meet the four candidates and give us your input, as always, we will have some postcards or cards there for you to give your input to the council so that we can get your input after you've met with them. This is a great opportunity to find out what the candidate, who the candidates are, what they're about, what their beliefs are, what their, their thought process is, and how it may affect Lamar. It's a big decision. It's a huge decision for our community. So I hope to see everybody out there that's interested in getting involved and giving us your feedback because it is an important, very important decision for the council. Again, that'll be Tuesday, the 23rd at 6:00 PM at the Tavern 1301. Next up is department updates, but I don't have anything. We didn't get anything for the department updates. I know there's a lot of things happening within the city. The Parks and Rec has been working hard on getting Escondido Park up and running. We had to do the, and we'll talk a little bit more when Anthony comes up about what's happening with Escondido Park as he comes up and gives his report. But great things happening in the city. Any miscellaneous questions or items that you want to ask for the city administrators' report? Council? Okay, many. Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on to our council liaison reports. We'll start off with Joe.
The golf court will be meeting tomorrow, so I have nothing for them to report this month yet. And Pet will be meeting next Monday. So I should have something hopefully by that next city council meeting for us.
Okay. All right, Sheila?
I do not have a liaison report this evening, but I did want to say how awesome the new flag looks over at the courthouse. It was a really great ceremony when they put it up.
It was, it, it looks great. It's a perfect spot for it. I think it was a great selection in the end and should be great.
I heard that.
David?
No, I don't have nothing at the moment.
Daniel?
We will have meeting, probably I'll have one before our next meeting. We haven't met yet.
I have a report for liaison positions. I do want to mention golf courses, two-shot golf tournament is coming up, 26th, 7th, and 8th. We are looking for a few more sponsors for the tournament. So if there's any radio stations or liquor stores interested in sponsoring the two-shot tournament, reach out to me, 719-691-0136.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. For me, I didn't have any. I did meet with Karen Bryant this morning. Things are very stable at the hospital and going very well. We had just kind of an update, a brief update, but nothing really new or exciting at the moment that I could report on. But I will keep you up to date as we have, continue to have these monthly meetings. All right. With that said, we're going to move on to the next item of the business, which is a special hearing. We have a public hearing for special liquor event permit to the Lamar Chamber of Commerce to host a beer garden during Oktoberfest and grant permission for the use of city property. So this is a two-part public hearing. First off, we would need to get a motion to move into the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to move into the public hearing. All those in favor, signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
All right. Moving into the public hearing, we'll start off with the staff presentation. Anything from the chief?
No, sir. I have no comments, questions, or concerns in regards to this permit. It's the same thing that has been approved numerous years before. So with that, again, no comments, questions, or concerns, and we would recommend that the permit be approved.
Okay. No issues from last year that you're aware of?
No, no, sir.
All right. City clerk?
Just that it was published and posted in a timely manner, on site and in paper. All of their members are all tip certified that will be serving. Is that correct? And other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. Did you want to add anything, Lance, the city attorney?
I didn't see any issues.
Okay. So the next item would be to allow the applicant to come up and give their presentation on what their plans are for the special events permit. If you'd like to come up and talk about that for a moment?
Hello, city council. My name's Colby Brubaker.
I'm Cassie Hernandez.
Thank you, guys, for having us here tonight and present. No real big changes from the previous events that we've generally, or that we posted before in the Enchanted Forest. There is one thing that we did do was we changed it from 8:00 PM to 9:00 PM in time, just to add a little more hours. And the only reason was, we kind of had a good problem of having a lot of bands. And so that was one of the things that we wanted to try and squeeze in, was a little bit more entertainment for the evening. Still doing the early cutoff time, like with early cutoff for the beer garden, so that it helps kind of draw, keep the evening ending at the, at a good time. So it doesn't kind of go further than the close off. We're doing a couple more things as far as between the depot building into the train, we are, Powers County is going to donate the use of their cattle panels, similar to the ones that they used over at the fair this year for their beer garden, just to help just beef up a little bit more. That's kind of been an area that's been a little weaker in the past that we wanted to kind of make a little stronger. We're good to go with security from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, the entire event time. We'll go through our similar meeting with security before the event as well. And one thing from last year that we're going to work with BBB on is there was an issue between having different wristbands between the racers and the people that were not in the race. We're just making it all the same thing. That way it's easily identifiable across everywhere. I believe that's it. If you guys have any questions or concerns, we can.
Who is doing the security for you?
Tommy Donegan. He's the one who we've had since I've been on the board of the beer gardens.
And how many security officers?
I believe he brings, it's either six or eight.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's been a suggestion in the past that you start offering the wristbands over there where you're serving alcohol. Has that been implemented as well? Because I know in the past there has been an issue where folks were walking around without a wristband and drinking alcohol because it was only offered right there as soon as they walked into the gate. So we were hoping that you gave them the opportunity to be able to get that band as well while they were getting the alcohol.
Yes, and I believe when we visited about this with Cinco de Mayo, I think after checking in after the event, I think that issue was mostly, I didn't hear any concerns after that, after visiting with security and, and the rest of our committee after working Cinco de Mayo. But yeah, that's going to be addressed and, and make sure that between our tip certified people that are serving, tip people that are giving out bands and checking IDs at the front as well as security. Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Absolutely.
Is your beer garden going to be just in one area or is it going to be like it was for Cinco de Mayo where they walk all over?
It's going to be the same. It's going to encompass that whole area. There's no changes as far as like the layout of the orange fans.
My one concern is, is that, and I know maybe somebody needs to announce it, that there are trash dumpsters, and we know you can't be their mother and dad being behind them. But it looks pretty tacky to see beer cans all over the area.
Absolutely.
So I'm, my suggestion is, is that you find more people volunteering to help clean it up and stuff.
Absolutely. Yep, we can work on that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the presenters? I don't have any. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I will open the floor for public comment. We will start off with anybody that is against the application. Is there anyone who would like to speak against this application? If you'll just state your name for the record.
I'm Galen Burnett, 800 South 6th Street, Lamar, Colorado. Thank you for allowing me to, to share again. It's been a little over 43 years since I moved to Lamar. It's grown on me. Frankly, I did not want to come here, but God encouraged me to. And it's now my home. It's now where I live. I anticipate I'll live there until I, until I die. Yeah. I want to live in a nice, safe place. I want to live in a place that's enjoyable. And so I have some concerns. There are problems with alcohol usage at the Oktoberfest. This is an opportunity for us as a city to make sure that we do the better job of taking care of our citizens. We know if people are be drinking alcohol that it does damage. It hurts the body. Something I just learned recently was if you're drinking alcohol, that it's a diuretic. It tends to cause you have, to lose your water, dehydration. I've had problems, I've been in the hospital several times with dehydration problems. It's not fun. I don't want it to happen. But if we allow this liquor to come in, we do have some potential problems with some of our fellow citizens with dehydration. We know about hangovers. I've noticed a lot of people with that down through the years. Alcohol also causes fatigue, tiredness, dizziness, dry mouth. Again, that must be connected in with dehydration, headaches, nausea, confusion, not knowing really what you're doing or, or how to do it, being drunk. You know how much it affects your, your driver's license. It shows up with that. You can go to jail, you can go so forth. People can be killed. Drunk driving is a horrible thing to do. Drunk walking is also bad. It causes brain damage. I've seen it cause cirrhosis. I've seen it cause cirrhosis of the liver in several of the people that I've known down through the years. Drinking causes them to throw up, have seizures, have a weakened immune system so that the body that God created is not able to defend itself well. We know that this drinking causes arguing, causes fights or aggressive behavior, people saying things that they normally wouldn't say. But because of alcohol, it reduces those, their inhibitions, and verbal abuse comes. Sometimes domestic abuse comes with all this, not only for a spouse, but also for the children. This will require an police coverage for this. We also know about the side effects of increased drinking. These are a number of the detrimental things that I'm asking you to consider protecting, encouraging, strengthening, making Lamar a better place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to speak against this application? I'm seeing none. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor, other than the applicants of this application? You just need to come up and state your name for the record?
Don Williams, and I'm at Three Cedar Hills. The only thing I could do is, Colby, is tell you, I have done many of the alcohol events we've had here, both as a law enforcement and as a private, you know, on the private security side. I don't know. One of the things is backed by the horseshoe pits. That seems to be like a conduit for everybody to bring outside alcohol there. And I know this is how you're making money, you know, so I don't know if you can make sure that that is fenced off or stuff like that back there? Because I worked it many times, you know, as a law enforcement, but also as on the private security side, it was almost impossible to keep those guys out of there. So maybe if they did put fences or what have you, because they just kind of mow them over. That's just something I was taught for you.
Talking about the horseshoe area?
Yeah, horseshoe, you know, they park back there and then they bring alcohol in through there. It made us tough, made it tough for the security teams to, you know, to keep a handle on it. If you get it, maybe if they can get a better fence back there. That's the only thing. I'm not speaking out against it. I'm just saying that there's a, you know, had issues. That's really all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If there is no one else who would like to speak for or against this application, I will go ahead and close the floor. Now we'll open it up to the council for any questions or clarification before we close the public hearing. Are there any questions or anything that you want to clarify?
Well, I just got one after hearing from Mr. Williams. I would like to know if we can take some more consideration based on what we heard there with that testimony on the horseshoes and what we can do or what the Chamber of Commerce can do to alleviate that or make sure you guys, you know, take care of the problem there.
Well, so maybe, maybe we could work together on figuring out some sort of a solution because with how our boundary is set up right now, we don't go across that street into that area. We go wherever that side street is before it wraps around into the back of the Enchanted Forest. Our fence ends there. There is a back entrance that we do have security that is manned back there, mostly for our vendors and banned and banned equipment and stuff kind of coming through there throughout the day. Our security is paid to police the beer garden. We don't necessarily, and I don't think we, maybe the Enchanted Forest extends to the horseshoe pits, but we don't necessarily rent or get a permit to use that space. So I mean, the chamber doesn't necessarily, we don't do anything over there. If we were, by all means, which I don't know if that's, I think we would be willing to have, I don't know.
Have they done a tournament there before during one of the?
There has. It's been, I think the, it was honestly actually the Sheriff's Youth Academy group that had hosted the last one. And that's been not this Oktoberfest, but two Oktoberfests ago. We haven't had a horseshoe tournament in the last three events that we've had there in the Enchanted Forest.
So you can just make sure that that's separated so they don't come in through that area?
Absolutely.
If you could just sort of, you know, make sure that it's separated and very well designated, that'd be great.
Are you meaning like, do we need to put a fence around that area?
Probably like, I would assume like a double fence. You know, you got the regular fence and maybe like a fence that separates. So I'm assuming if they're giving.
Do you not have a fence on that end?
Yeah, there is a fence.
Okay.
We're completely, we're completely fenced in. We just don't jump that street that goes over to the other part. And so we kind of just, we pay our security to police the interior.
I would think it's probably a double fence, you know, so like a three foot wide where if they're giving it over the fence or something.
For sure, for sure.
I don't know what could be going on, but.
Okay.
You know, we'll have to work on that.
For sure.
But you can commit to just trying to reinforce it.
Oh, but I've been there before and they've been, the security's been pretty good on that entrance.
Well, and that's another thing I can visit with them. I mean, if they see it from afar, you can definitely make sure that it's addressed. Because I mean, it's not, it's just the street over, and so 20, 30 feet away, we'll be able to
notice.
Observe that it's happening, and then we can either address it ourselves or we can, yeah.
Don, maybe you can clarify. Are you saying that they're drinking in the horseshoe pit?
No, they're parking along the horseshoe pit around that side there. And, you know, of course they got coolers, that type of thing. And so, you know, you stuff it in your pocket and it can come back in. And I did, like I said, I was just in New York and I was working with the security and we were under manned, you know. And I know it's obvious, but enough people who were under manned, it's sort of the fence just came over.
Respectfully.
That's all I would say.
Can I ask respectfully, how, do you remember how many years ago that was? Because I know we've requested a lot of changes within just the last year that they've, okay. Okay.
So I, so I didn't mean.
No, for sure.
But, you know, and the more you drink, the more they get.
I think an easy solution that we could provide would be just getting the road blocked, that half road blocked for, obviously your vendors will use it.
The entire, yeah.
And then just getting some of those road closed signs and cones to just close off that entire half street.
Just do another block.
So they can't park there and have easier access to coolers or whatnot. And then as far as security, they've beefed up their security for the last year to meet our requests.
Okay.
And I think that, in my opinion, would be sufficient.
Okay.
You're not going to stop everybody from doing stupid things as we all know, but I've been impressed with what you guys have, the changes you've made to facilitate the requests we've had.
Okay.
If I could add too, I forgot to do this in the opening. We did add DD drivers this year, opened it up as sponsorships. I know SDS is one of the groups that is going to be, I believe, donating their buses for that night or a bus for the night to where we can provide DDs at least three different times kind of in the evening. So we'll have that as well.
Thank you for that.
For sure.
Okay. All right, so we've closed the floor. We've answered the questions. Now we need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Any others in favor of?
All right, so this is, gives the council an opportunity to discuss amongst ourselves and decide what action we would like to take.
So are we needing to do two separate motions or can we wrap these all into one?
It's just one.
Okay, I know there was two separate.
You could do one, wrap the two different items.
Okay, and Chief Ritter, last year, any problems?
Not that I'm aware of.
Right. Then to make it easier, because I know like for SCCCI, we had to get a request for those part, you know, road closed stuff. Can I wrap that in to allow him to reach out to Ted? Okay, so I make a motion to approve the special liquor event permit, grant permission for the use of city property and allow Chamber to work with Ted at Street Department on some road closure equipment for that little half-street.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
So we have a motion and a second, as stated. Any final discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Any others in favor of?
Okay, thank you very much. Now we're going to move on to our next item on the agenda. This is a council update and possibly getting direction. This was initiated by Chief Burkhardt, who is acting as our intern building official on many of these projects. And we, of course, had an issue that came up over the last month that has been quite concerning and it's escalated a little bit. So I will let Chief Burkhardt take over from there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So yeah, it gives a bit of an update and we'll kind of go back so we can get a full picture for you guys. On August 12th, we were notified, well, we were made aware at the Fire Department that there was a building being demoed in town. And so I contacted Joy down at the Building Department just to double check and make sure, hey, do we have permits or do we know this project's going on? There's no record of an exterior building being demoed. So I went ahead and responded over there and witnessed DZ Construction tearing down the outside of the back of the building. This is giving the 200 block of North Main Street in that alley there behind where loaf and jug would be, ruining portions of the roof and exterior walls. We approached, I approached DZ Construction and asked for the permits just to sit there and start getting the paperwork process taken care of. They stated, well, we do have a permit. I said, okay, let's go ahead and grab it. So they went ahead and pulled the permit for us, but the permit was stated for an interior wall demo that was not load-bearing. I confirmed that with Joy back at the Building Department, and I asked them, why are you now doing an exterior load-bearing wall? They stated they thought that permit was good for that. So we went ahead and had them stop everything where they were, and I needed some more documentation from them. I needed items such as structural analysis. That comes from an engineer that tells you where to cut, where not to cut, what's going to be safe, what won't be safe, so they can continue moving forward with their demolition. They did not have a structural engineer report. I asked for a dust mitigation plan, just because we do have an at-risk community for dust. I mean, we live in southeastern Colorado, so it's constantly dusty, but let's not make it worse. So that's where they can sit there and keep the dust down as they do their demo. They had no dust mitigation plan. Same with the debris management plan. We want to know where this stuff is going. It's not so much if it has asbestos in it, but if it potentially does, we can explain to other authorities, okay, this is where we believe the next site might be that we have to go address. They did not have a debris management plan. They're also required to have a CDPE demo permit through the state. This has the asbestos components in it. So that way that satisfies the state's needs. They did not have a state permit. And lastly, the city demo permit for an exterior load-bearing wall was not obtained.
Or a building permit.
Or a building permit for the addition of a wall, a new exterior wall, what would be a new exterior wall. At that time, we went ahead and served them with a stop work order. I had Joy put her pretty writing on it for me, and we went back and served it, stating, you know, all work has to stop right now until we can get all those components satisfied. They say at that time, we're going to start working on it. I said, okay. The next day, Randall, Destin Randall, I can't remember his firm for the life of me, they employed him to come down and do a structural analysis to see what's been completed so far, whether the building was actually safe to be occupied at that time. He attested, yes, it will be safe as it sits right now, and we can continue forward with getting the structural analysis, the designs for what wall they did put up and how they can continue their demo. At that time, they nauseated all their processes they needed to complete, whether it be CDPE, R permit, all the other plans. Now, like with a dust mitigation plan, a debris management plan, that's not all in detail. It can be made out in a letter, just nice and easy. Tell me how you're going to keep your dust down. Tell me what you're going to do with that runoff water, because if you're doing, getting a lot of water on it. And then also, you know, where this debris is going. Nothing crazy. The biggest component to this is give you the CDPE demo permit. Now that takes time. They do have a waiting period on their permits. And they also have their requirements, whether that be having a third-party asbestos testing company come in, test the premises, test what they have so far. So their components, they had to be working through to get that accomplished. From what I understood, me and Joy, we gave them a path to get correct. Now all debris had to stay in place until we can get something stating that, yes, there's no asbestos in it and we can move forward with the demo. Then on September 4th, we had a call in that there was more construction going on over at the site after the stop worker, stop work order had been issued. They had installed a roll-up garage door in that new back wall and also installed some plywood sheathing over some framing that hadn't been inspected yet for proper installation. So it was reiterated again that a stop work order is in place and nothing else can be completed there at that time.
And there was somebody taking bricks as well.
Yeah, there was some, some.
Removal.
Removal bricks. At that time, told them, nope, no removing bricks. Got to sit there and hold those in place until that time that is deemed appropriate to do so. Been consulting with Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem on this issue during our Wednesday meetings to keep them involved and up to date with what we've been doing, as well as Joy and Ann Marie's been in on this as well, and also CDPE has been notified. They're moving forward with their own components that they need to be satisfied. So that puts us where we're at today. I'd take any questions from council that has. I know we've had a lot of contractors call in asking what's going on, community members saying, hey, what's going on here? So Mayor Crescent thought it'd be appropriate to come before council and give everybody an update of what's going on so we can sit there have our side of what's happened to this point.
So what actions have we taken as far as fines, fees, or any assessments against them?
As of right now, I've been referring to Lance, so he may give counsel to council as far as their further actions.
Okay. Are we at liberty to make them tear down the wall for inspection based upon not being inspected before the plywood was put up?
So once we get to the point where they've had their asbestos and full report and the CDPE demo permit completed, then we'll be able to allow them to go continue work. Now, with that being said, that sheathing will have to be removed in order to make sure that the framing was in place properly prior to them putting the sheathing on.
Oh, thank you. So now that CPTHD is involved, they're just waiting on their permits now in order to remove the bricks or to find out if it's containing asbestos?
That they will have to sit there and deal with their component. We're not really involved in their side of the issue. Once, once they have a piece of paper saying, yes, it's the demo permit from the state, then we know that that's been satisfied.
Okay, so since all these steps have been taken, can we now at this point legally impose fees and fines if they get back to work and start moving bricks?
I'll refer to you, Lance.
Yes, I think, can I just say something real quick before you do? The only thing that I was concerned with and that, one of the items that I really wanted to address with the council was the fact that, you know, they had received direction from Stephanie months ago as far as what it would take to make the exterior wall. According to Stephanie, she advised them that they would need to have the demo permits from the state, from the city. They would have to have the asbestos testing. They would have to do the structural analysis and make sure they have a structural design. Instead, they did this interior wall demolition permit and got the permit to do that, which wasn't even to build the wall. It was just to do the demolition. So even after they came to speak with me at my office and discussed their situation and how bad of a situation it'd become, the problem was is that I felt that Jeremy and Joy and Lance even had worked together to try to give them a pathway of, this is how we fix the problem. This is how we get it taken care of, and we move on to the next step. The concerning part was on September the 4th, when they decided to build the extra garage door on the wall that has not been structurally approved, that didn't have a building permit to begin with, that has not had any testing done it for asbestos. I can't imagine that they didn't, that they could build the wall or build the garage door without disturbing any of the testing area for the asbestos or any of that. So it's a concern to me because other contractors are looking at this and as somebody that is trying to, in my opinion, skirt around what we have in place. So it's a little concern for that reason only for me. Did you want to add anything, Manuel, before I?
In the reality of any of our ordinances, regulations, or laws are only as good as our ability to enforce them. If we're not able to enforce any of those ordinances, laws, or regulations, then people just do what they want to do and get a talking to.
Well, we can't allow that.
Right. So Lance, what all of you filed?
Well, so first I would say I think that this, any kind of litigation would be initiated by filing a complaint against them. I've been in the process of reviewing what Jeremy's provided to me last week to discuss it. My view is that we have cause to at least be able to bring a complaint, seek penalties involved with violation of the code violations with permits, failing to get permits, failing all steps of our building code. Now, what type of recourse remedies can the city be able to recoup? I think that obviously is dependent upon the judge being agreement with violations and assessing some type of penalty against them for that. Obviously, if a cease and desist order didn't work, I don't know, an injunction will prevent them from moving forward. I also don't want to foreshadow what remedies that we're trying to seek or all actions that we may invoke in this. But I do think that there's sufficient cause to be able to file a complaint here proceed if the council chooses to give that direction.
And I also want to point out that when this all first occurred in August, I had both DZ Construction as well as Evergreen come and contact me and discuss it with me. And I stated to them both, if not one, if not both of them, that it's really frustrating because it puts me, as the mayor, it puts me in a bad position because here they are breaking the laws that we have in place for building permits and demolitions and safety reasons when it comes to asbestos abatement within the city. And I'm wanting them to be a success. I want them, I want the new businesses in our community. I want these young individuals to be successful entrepreneurs in our community. But we can't do that at the expense of the safety and security of our community. And for that reason, I was trying to express to them how frustrated I was because I was put in a predicament where we have to take action against a brand-new business or a newer business that we want to see succeed. And it's very, it's very disheartening to have that happen. But at the same time, we have businesses that are in our community that have been in business for decades, who actually play by the rules, follow the laws, and do what they need to do. So it's a tough discussion. But I wanted to have that with the council and make sure everybody was aware of that.
Well, based on the information that was brought forth, it's my recommendation that we come forth with some complaints. If we don't start there, I think we're setting a precedent for every other developer to come in and do as they feel as needed. And it's obvious that the wall has to come down anyway with that new door. So that way the proper inspections can be done. I agree with you, Kurt. You know, we'd all want developers to come in. We want new businesses to strive and be successful at the same time. We do have codes, we do have inspections. And that's to keep citizens safe, other people safe in the surrounding communities and those that are attached to certain buildings safe. So those things have to be followed. But if they've had, it sounds like they've had the proper information beforehand and chose to do what they chose to do. So it'd be my recommendation that we go forth with some complaints to make sure that they know that, hey, it's serious, you know? I mean, this isn't just something we can overlook.
And do you have any else want to speak?
Do you feel confident with the information you have to move forward? Or would you like more time to research it?
Well, I mean, based on the conversations that I've had with Jeremy, I mean, again, I think there's sufficient basis to file a complaint. Based on the information we have and the timeline and information that Jeremy's provided to them and the actions that were taken after the cease and desist order, I think there's cause. I think we have sufficient grounds to file it if council shows to do so.
Well, I think it'd be a good time to start that paper trail if needed.
Would filing a complaint have any issue with the CD-PHE's processes?
CD-PHEs have a separate set of requirements. I don't see that having impact. At least at this point, I don't see that. And I assume that the CD-PHE, it's going to take them a while before they even get approved there. So from the city's perspective, this may be resolved prior to CD-PHE.
No, I'm assuming they probably moved the bricks so that way the alley was accessible?
So right now, the alley is partially blocked. You know, it's causing some issues for trash pickup in that alley and any utility problems that may occur, you know, if light and power needs to get in there to assess some lines that happen to go down for any reason. So, but they are in place. We're not allowing anything to be moved until we can get some sort of assurance for CE-PG or
That they can't be moved?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Any other questions? So you had made the statement a minute ago. Was that a motion or was that?
Yeah, I make a motion that we start the complaint process with Lance and move forward.
Okay.
And I guess I don't know if it requires a motion. I just need direction from how council wants to proceed if you want me to seek legal recourse against that.
I would say, yes. You know, even if it wasn't, I mean, we need to find out what the legal recourses are. More than anything, at the beginning of things, if we don't even have an idea of what it entails, then we're just walking in circles. So finding out for sure is the direction, I would say.
Finding out's a good idea. I think there definitely needs to be something that says, you know, this wasn't acceptable. But I don't want it to be something to the point where it shuts down new businesses either.
That's the hard part. You know, we don't want to shut down a new business. But at the same time, we don't want to have the businesses that have been in existence for decades feeling like they've done this for no reason whatsoever. So it should be a harsh penalty. It should be, you know, comparable to what the action was. And, you know, as far as the detriment, but equal and just. What were you going to state?
Well, I was just going to say, just with the ability to seek remedies or file complaints at that direction, I think that provides sufficient leeway to see, one, proceeding with the complaint process. But two, potentially finding alternative remedies that still ensure that going forward, this property is an issue that's going to be applied with. Absent that, that there would be harm. But that would be, I think that just provides us flexibility and remedies. So with that kind of direction, I think I can evaluate this necessary cost of action potential requests that we, or penalties.
Thank you. Okay. So I know you made a motion. We didn't get a second yet. Do we need, or do we just give you direction?
I think direction's sufficient. Oftentimes, even in complaints that we proceed with, comes from law enforcement or other directors may have issues. Typically, it's just been direction. Most directors give that authority to proceed.
The only other thing that I would say is, that I would like to say and remind the council of is, both of these organizations are contractors. And this was on one of the contractor's property. And it was their own project. The other part of it is, if they're not following the rules and doing what they need to do on their own project, how will they react on the projects that they are hired to do? We need to make sure that they are following the rules when they're hired as a contractor to perform work for a customer, whether it's one business or the other. I mean, it needs to, we need to make sure that they are in compliance with what the building codes are inside the city limits. So that was the other part of the concern in making sure that we do that. That was brought up to me.
Right, and I think Joy can attest that, you know, they've been coming in, getting permits as needed for a lot of their projects. So, I mean, they are following the permitting process within.
After the fact, after they've started work or?
Started and sometimes completed, but inspections have been made to verify that the work is complete and done appropriately.
Yeah. That doesn't sound too healthy.
And it's been a practice, not so much from Joy or Stephanie or previous, but it's been a practice in the city for quite some time that, you know, say, you have a massive sewer leak and you got to get it dug up on Saturday to get it done. Well, it'll get in and remain open until the inspection can be completed and somebody can come in on Monday, purchase the permit and get the process moving. So there is some understanding that some projects need a right-now response versus a planned-out demolition or planned-out replacing a roof. That's, you know, the insurance has told me I need it replaced for the last three months.
Makes sense.
So.
Okay, so we have direction. We've given the attorney direction to move forward with an action, is that correct?
Sufficient.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments that we need to share?
I don't think so. I don't have any.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Pocket Park License Agreement. We included a copy of that license agreement for you in the package for the council. This was brought up to me as a city administrator early last month. Anthony Latour had brought this up to me that he had noticed on, and I'll just go to the say real quick, kind of a recap. He had noticed on Facebook that they were looking for somebody to do maintenance and facility management for the Pocket Park the Arkansas Valley Wind Percussion Ensemble was. And Anthony, you had said you had contacted them to ask them what was happening, is that right?
Yes.
And during that conversation, Trevor Lacoste, who is the chairman of the board for Arkansas Valley Wind and Percussion Ensemble, Inc., advised Anthony that they were going to be canceling the agreement, the lease agreement for the Pocket Park with the city of Lamar. Do you want to speak on that a little bit and what the discussion was?
Yes, the discussion was that he would be canceling the agreement because of the condition of the Pocket Park. And when I specifically asked what conditions he was talking about, he said that there was trash that was always there and it just wasn't in the condition that he was in agreements of. And I assured him that two times a week, I get coffee from a local vendor there and I spend time there. It's power washed once a week on Fridays for the weekend. And he had mentioned some other conflicts that he had, but I won't bring those on record. But essentially, I asked him if I could meet with him and, you know, if we could iron things out and he declined.
Okay. Following that, I had reached out to him myself, personally by phone on August the 26th. And I tried to find out what his intentions were. He had also advised me that he would be canceling this agreement. And I told him there was a lot to be done if we were going to cancel this agreement. The agreement, of course, gives a 90-day notice in writing with certified mail. And I was explaining to him that we would need to do that to make sure that we go through the complete process of canceling this agreement according to the agreement terms. I tried to talk to him a little bit to see what was going on, if there was anything that could be remedied. He had stated he had sent me an email, which I could not find in my email accounts. But he had stated he sent me an email with his concerns back in, I believe he said, March or April. But I don't, I could not find one in my archives. So in the discussion, he basically advised me, well, this is your formal notice. If this is what we're going to be doing, I'll get the letter out to you soon. I had asked him to send me the letter as soon as possible so we could start working on the complete process of converting, you know, having our staff no longer take care of the location, converting over our water, light accounts over to Arkansas Valley Wind and Percussion. And then also to give us time to contact the people who have already reserved the park for rentals, so that way we can get those taken care of and that there's not a conflict. To validate it, I sent him an email on August 26th as well, basically recapping what we had talked about in our conversation over the phone. And I gave him a, provided him a copy of the actual license agreement to let him know that these are the processes. I had never heard back. I've never received a response back at all. So on September the 2nd, I sent another email asking him, we've not heard from you regarding the letter of notice to cancel the attached agreement. Our phone conversation early last week, you stated that your board had directed you to cancel the attached agreement with Lamar. But as I stated in the agreement, we need to have a formal 90-day notice in writing. Your website is already asking for individuals to book through your email address, but without a notice in place. The city still has renters scheduled and we are accepting new rentals as we have in the past. We're doing business as usual. The neglect to formally notify the council of your intentions may become an issue and will be your liability if any renters double-book with you and us at the same time because the cancellation process has not begun. I copied in our city attorney, I copied in the the other interim city administrator, as well as Trevor and his wife Kathleen. But as of the 2nd, I did not hear anything. So on the 4th, Thursday, September the 4th, I sent another email asking and pleading with him again to, please let us know what your intents are. Please let us know if you're going to formalize your verbal intent to cancel. I did have the staff go through and give us a listing of all the removable items that were listed in the park, whether it be benches or light sensors or art sculptures, anything that was removable within the park. I'd asked him to get me an inventory of that so that we would need to know, so we would know what we need to do next. So that was on the 4th. As of today, the 8th, I have still not received any kind of comment from Trevor. And I'm not sure what to do at this point. And I think Anthony, you're kind of at the same point where we don't know what to do. We don't know what to expect. We hate to keep taking reservations and then have multiple people show up on the same day to rent the park and because they rented through the Arkansas Valley Wind Percussion and the city. And now we have no clear definition. Did you want to add anything to all of that?
I did want to add. You know, the Pocket Park has been not only a huge investment for the community and through the city, but it's also been a great place for families to have activities, birthday parties, graduation parties. Sometimes people just rent the park to have some time with friends and family. So if in any way, you know, we can get Mr. Lacoste to the table and work out an agreement to continue to utilize the Pocket Park, that would be my recommendation if that could happen. Because it is a great place. Since the last time we went through some of the fee changes and the alcohol permits, we think things have run a lot more smooth than they have in the past.
It's definitely been a learning experience for the city as far as how to take care of that type of park in downtown Lamar where it's very used, very active, or where we have big events on the weekends. And, you know, clean up afterwards on the Sunday morning is always a challenge. We've talked about that on department head meetings as far as trying to approve upon that. I don't think anybody on the council is interested in canceling this agreement, but I just don't know what we do in the meantime because we've not received a formal decision either way from them, other than a verbal comment. So, I mean.
Well, I've got to ask because I'm curious. Since there's been no communication with Mr. Trevor Lacoste, is he sick, out of town, vacation, you know, gone for a month? I was hoping there'd be some kind of a understanding of why there's no communication. It just doesn't seem right. You know, it just doesn't seem like Trevor would not respond.
I couldn't answer that.
I don't know. You know, I've had a good working relationship with Trevor prior to this event. And he always answers my calls. And he used to let us know if someone was renting the Shore Arts Center. if someone was renting the Shore Arts Center and we had it double booked with the Pocket Park to work things out so that it wouldn't conflict with each party.
It is such a shame to see that we're at this point. And mercy, I mean, it is, it's an asset to the city, asset to the citizens of this community. It would be a shame to have something like that just disappear. I mean, not disappear, but the amenities that the city has invested into that. You know, none of us want to see that place being taken apart. I don't want to see it being taken apart.
I don't either.
I would definitely encourage Trevor, if he's out there listening, please make contact with the mayor or the city attorney or with Anthony Latour and let's come to a conclusion to where all parties are happy and we can let the citizens keep utilizing that Pocket Park.
Well, I think what, the reason why I wanted to bring this up to the council is we wanted to get direction on what your thoughts were. I mean, if you want to give direction to have Anthony go out and try to speak with him again in person or I've offered to meet with the board, I've offered to, you know, have a, asked him to call me if we wanted to talk. So I think the door is open, we just need to find a way to do that. And I don't know how far we want to drive.
I think.
I don't want to make it worse than it is, but at the same time.
I'd agree that we don't just make a decision on ending anything. I, I would like to see interim administrator Cressman and you maybe just go out to his business and see if he'd be willing to talk or schedule something in person to talk later.
Okay.
At least give him the opportunity to try and explain.
They'll tell you what you need to know right there.
Yeah, most certainly.
If, if there's any room to communicate and if he shows you the door, then we know what to do next, so.
Yeah. Well, that's definitely not what I would want, but.
Well, and, you know, I've used the Pocket Park many times. We've never had an issue showing up with it dirty. I know with communicating with Kendra and yourself in reserving the Pocket Park, we've always been reassured that it will be cleaned up and we've always done our best job to keep it clean afterwards. Our last event, we had two inches of rainfall in 45 minutes and we still managed to clean up after ourselves while soaking wet and packing multiple vehicles with soaking wet tables and chairs and canopies. So I just want to commend the work you guys have done to, to manage that Pocket Park. Because I know it has been difficult navigating the ins and outs of the weekends and overtime pay to have people go out and clean it. I've always seen you guys doing a great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I guess anybody else want to add anything? Sounds like that's, is everybody in agreement with that direction?
I am.
Or if you can't reach him, is there anybody else on, in the organization there that could be contacted as well? Maybe he is out of town?
Yeah, I can try, well, I, I copied in his wife in hopes that if he was not able to reach out, that maybe she could, but I don't know who else is on the board. I guess we can inquire about that as well, see if we can find out who else is on the board.
My only considerations are, you know, if he has expressed on more than one occasion that in his mind, he's assuming that he's going to rescind the contract and, you know, utilize booking himself. He may not fully realize, you know, just with the written agreement that we have with him, how it's still in place. And I, I think having something legal to bring to him to really get him to, to realize that it's not just a verbal, hey handshake, let's, you know, work things out, but we actually have a written document that has to be adhered to. So having something legal and binding to share with him when discussions are made, I think is important. Not, I mean, it, it's not a, you know, push come to shove type of a thing, but still sometimes it helps to clear the mind of what they assume they're able to do and what we assume we're doing and clearing it up between both parties to where, well, here's the legal part of it is that we're in a written agreement that's signed by both parties.
Okay. Okay, well, if there's anybody that's on the board that we know of, it would be good to have that discussion because I think it's, you know, it's probably something we need to explore a little bit more before we let it go away from the community, so. Because I think there's a lot more ramifications to this decision that need to be addressed.
I think we also need to irradiate that.
I think.
It's not city council's.
Undertaking for them to replace all of that.
It's not city council's desire to tear apart that park.
No. Okay. All right, does that give you enough direction then?
Yes, it does.
We'll talk about it tomorrow and see what we can do to find a time to meet with their board.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is Escondido Field Contract with Lamar Community College. Anthony has been working on Escondido Park for quite some time now and here we are at a point where we need to get this contract approved.
Yes, and this is, this is a, a result of the signed agreement that you approved that we get signed. LCC did sign their copy to pay for half and I wanted to give you an update on the final numbers from the project. It looks like the project came in at 207 and some change and we actually saved the city $1,480.93 because it came in underbid once it was all completed.
Okay.
And with that said, I wanted to give you an update on the top dressing based off of what was said and recommended from the last meeting. The next morning, Gilbert, Tracy and Drew and I met over at Escondido and we talked to Eric over the phone. We were able to find a rock pit in Kansas in Garden City that had sand that was similar to what we needed. We purchased that sand, 145.7 tons at $20 a ton for $2,914. And then Eric from Golf and Sport brought down the 80/20 Command Soil, 27.78 tons and that cost $1,993.77, bringing the total to $4,907.77. And we were able to get that top dressed last Friday. And Eric brought one of his guys, Juan, down with the top dresser and got it completed.
That's great news.
Yes.
And we got it within what we needed to spend, so that's great. Any questions for Anthony on that? I know last weekend they weren't able to play on the field because of the rain, is that correct?
Yes, because of the rain Friday.
How is it now?
It looks good right now.
Do they have a game this weekend?
They do have a game Friday and Saturday. And before I forget, I wanted to thank Ted and his crew, the guys that went and actually picked up the dirt, John, Jerry and Kelly. And the Streets Department has been amazing to Parks and Rec this year. So we really appreciate all the work that they've done with our projects.
Okay. Any questions for Anthony?
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Chapter 30 Publishing and Reading Requirements. This was initiated.
Did you vote?
Do we need a vote, sorry? Do we need to vote on this for the LCC agreement? You're right. I didn't think about that. We need to vote to get that approved.
Anthony, is the, is the, is the final invoice, what you're saying, is the 206,138?
Correct.
That was, is the bid, I think the bid was, I think the, the document beforehand is just a bid.
Correct, that was an estimate on what they were estimating on the field.
So we'll need that correction made in the contract.
Okay, what was the correction to give me?
And they've already, it's already been signed by the college, so we'll have to re-sign.
With the new dollar amount?
I would like to verify that as well, though, before.
Okay.
And Anthony's asked me to do that, I just.
And I have the numbers, I just wanted to double check with you, Kristen, to make sure. But they send, sent each invoice for the sand delivery and I compared that to the ticket that we received.
Okay.
And then this last estimate for the 99 was for the sod, the laser grade and all the remaining stuff that they've done.
So we can, we could approve the pricing proposal and the, or do we need the pricing proposal?
Just the contract with the LCC, yep.
Yeah.
And then we'll just.
So we just need the approval of the contract with LCC pending review by the attorney and the city treasurer for corrections, is that?
Or verification of.
For verification of.
And put, put the new amount in.
Will that work?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the agreement with review by the city attorney and treasurer to verify final costs and update the contract. Is that good?
That worked?
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other questions?
Thank you for getting that worked out, Anthony.
All those in favor signify with an eye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Jerry?
unanimous in favor of?
Okay, now thank you. Now is Chapter 30 Publishing and Reading Requirements by Anne Marie Crempin.
Good evening. As you know, we are in the final stretch of our Chapter 30 updates and we're at the point where we're looking at how we're going to publish and read the ordinance changes. And really, I'm going to allow Linda and Lance to have a great deal of leading this conversation because they have, Lance has been trying to interpret the, the charter and Linda has been looking into how expensive it would be to, to publish 80 pages of a new ordinance. So Linda, would you like to start first?
I sent an email out that stated that cost was going to be right around $3,600. Cairo County Press was willing to reduce that cost by half, so it came in at about $1,300, which was very generous of them. I still feel that since our charter does give us an allowance with your approval to publish by name, that we should go that route.
So, so we could publish by name and do a link for a website that they could go review it?
Right.
Is that correct?
Right, and I, well, Lance is the final interpreter, but I'd say that the original charter had no idea that information would be at everybody's fingertips as they're at a phone or a computer, they can just pull up the link. They don't have to come in and look at a newspaper or come look at the copy. It's closer in their phones than any, anywhere else. So Lance has been looking at it and has some thoughts.
So the charter provision that I, I was looking at is, there's two of them, Section 5, 5-4 and 5-9 codes published by reference. It talks in that section about those of a professional organization or by recognized trade, that those codes be adopted by reference. It talks about how, rather than publishing, you can publish by reference. So essentially, some type, some type of summary, notification within and whether you want to use this in addition, but I think a mandatory piece from the charter provision would be that it would be essentially a summary and stating that there, the code or review would be available at the clerk's office for anyone that wanted to review it. So I think that's a key piece. It's also in the 5-4 regarding procedures for passage and it talks about that council has discretion that they can determine that, that the code be published by reference. So I, I think our standard ordinance says just publish, order to publish. I think what, what I would recommend changing on that would be order to publish by reference on both the final first reading, after the first reading.
Okay. I would, I would recommend we do publish by reference and we can reference back that they can view it on the web, they can come into the clerk's office, they could go to the library and wherever else they can access it to read it. Is that possible to do more than one?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that the statute, the piece in the charter is that it has to mention that there's a copy available.
Yeah.
So obviously adopted in the 60s that there was an internet. So, but I think you can also provide additional information where it can. I don't see that being an, providing too much problem.
Okay.
And I could work with Michael Yearman to prepare a summary of where the changes are in the, in the ordinance, so it would be easier for somebody to look for those sections.
Okay. Counsel?
I'm in agreement, I, I, I think that's rock that we go, is we reference.
Definitely, I think it's worth the saving to publish by reference.
Is that a motion?
It is. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to publish it by reference with as much information as possible, is that correct?
Right.
You're modifying your motion or put that on there?
Yes.
You're seconded? Okay.
That worked? Is that?
That's fine. I would say that I tried to review this for a reading as well, but I saw a aspect of reading.
Okay.
So I would, I think we've had discussions about special sessions. I think I have a special session, probably what's most efficient. I also have kind of mentioned Anne Marie. Maybe we can see where we can limit the scope of what's actually changing in the ordinance, but I don't know what we have.
Can we bring a pillow for the special sessions?
Well, why don't we start with this one and get this one out of the way and then we can work on the reading portion. So we do have a motion in a second, correct?
Yes.
So without any other questions, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
Okay, then we can, I know there was some discussion about having an automated reading, like Adobe Reader, read it. So that could be a possibility too.
Definitely.
I think Adobe Readers reading it. Okay. All right, moving on, we have a discussion on liaison appointments to boards and commissions. This was brought up because we did have one council member who did want to trade their Main Street Lamar Board position and the Adjustment and Appeals Board position as well. So those are the main things and that, who would be taking what now, did we decide?
It was actually Airport Board.
Airport Board, not Adjustment and Appeals.
So Sharon and I had discussed switching my Main Street and her Airport Board and just switching those straight across. And then while we're talking about it, after that meeting we had with Michael Yearman, it sounds like we might have changes to Adjustment and Appeals?
No, no, just those two members are non-voting members.
Right, they're just a liaison position, not a voting member.
Okay. I would just, I over, I mean, I remember him saying, someone saying something about not having one on there. So I wasn't, it confused me.
We're still working on that issue.
Through that.
So we're trying to figure out what the best route is.
Okay.
So that was the change that we had, was the Airport and Main Street Board swap between those two council members. We really didn't have that many changes on anybody else. My recommendation is we leave it the way it is until November because after the election, we may have a slew or possible changes. So we might just make this correction with your agreement and then we can leave the rest as it is.
Is Public Safety Committee the same as the Public Safety Board? Because it's, has you and I on it and it's just me.
Right, so we can correct that by taking the mayor off of the Public Safety Board and changing it to Board instead of Committee. So we would have three changes. One is the change between Airport Board and Main Street Board and then the other is the correction to the Public Safety Board in removing Mayor Cressman from the Public Safety Board.
So I'm up.
Exactly.
So we have a motion in a second to make these corrections. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the item that we had added on to the agenda at the beginning of the, the meeting. Today, I was, I had Doug Thrall, the chairman of Lamar Light and Power. Today, I was, I had Doug Thrall, the chairman of Lamar Light and Power, visit me at my office and bring to me, I hand-delivered a letter. And then shortly thereafter, I'd received a call from Councilwoman Jenkins to let me know that he had also sent it to all of the council members by email as verification. Just to summarize the email, as the chairman of the Board, Lamar Light and Power, on behalf of the Board, with the fiduciary duty to their $5,862 customers, writing the letter to formally request that we reconsider our resolution to retain the $350,000 settlement award from the legal action taking against ARPA for the failed power plant project. While the action was taken by the city of Lamar to benefit, it was basically what they're asking is for us to reconsider the action from last year, where we had rescinded the resolution to give the $350,000 each year to Lamar Light and Power. We rescinded it and put it back into our general fund to help position ourselves and do, place those funds in a location that would be better and more beneficial for our community. At the time that we did that last year, we did state that we would be reconsidering this every year, and we would look to apply these funds as needed. Now, we are in the middle of our budget season, so we haven't even completed our second draft of the budget, so we do not know where we're going to put this at, if we were to keep these funds. But there are multiple projects that we are working on that are diligently or desperately needing these funds for, whether it's the new fire truck, or the public safety building, or the additional funding to go to our police and fire departments together. There's multiple options out there that we can utilize these funds for that would be benefit for the community. So his last paragraph states, "I am asking you to do what's right here with these funds and allow us to continue to keep our already high electric rates as low as we can, for the benefit of our customers, which includes all of you." Then he stated, "I don't want to make this a political issue, but we are prepared to debate this point with any of you in a public forum," and is asking us to make a decision on what we want to do.
For my consideration, I don't think we should take any different actions and make any changes that we have made from last year. So in retaining it is, you know, that's my consideration, is that we retain it.
I'd also make the recommendation that we keep retain it.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, it only made a difference of about $2 to $3 per electric bill for the average customer, so I think it makes the most sense for the city to keep that in the general fund.
It was less than that when I calculated it out. Are we, do we know those, the decrease that they received in rates from ARPA, did they pass those on to their customers?
Not that I know of, no. I know there was a decrease in the ARPA rates this year. I didn't notice that. I didn't see that.
Well, they, last year, they had decreased ARPA rates, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, and I haven't seen anything about changes this year, but I also don't know if LUB passed those savings on to the customers. Are you familiar at all?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Personally.
My consideration is the same as council members Gonzalez and Temes.
Okay. So do we have a motion on this decision, so that we can pass along a decision to Lamar Light and Power of what we're going to do with these funds this year?
I'll make a motion to retain the funds.
Oh, okay, you already made the motion, then. And then Joe, I didn't know that was a motion, I just knew that's a consideration. So Joe, is that your second, then? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items. Are there any miscellaneous items that we need to discuss?
I just want to mention that our job is to look at the entire infrastructure picture and all of the departments we oversee, and that's where my consideration comes from with that money.
But we do have the full community to consider, and all of the departments, and public safety, and streets, and, I mean, we do have quite a bit to consider, so I would agree. Okay, with that said, and there being no other miscellaneous items, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
And the meeting is now adjourned, it's 8:34. Our next meeting will be on Monday, September the 2nd.